Begin with prayer before we open the meeting. So those who would like to join us, please stand and Mr. Duncan is going to lead us in a moment of prayer.
Let's pray. Dear Father Lord, we come to you tonight and thank you just, Lord, for another day that you blessed us with. I pray that you'll be in the midst of everything that goes on tonight. I pray you'll give us wisdom and clarity and I pray you'll continue to bless the school system, Lord. I pray you, Lord, as we get closer to the new school year, the start of a new year, I pray that you'll continue to bless our faculty, our staff, our students and family. I pray you keep us safe. I pray through everything you will be accomplished. In this day and in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Now for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can everybody hear us? We're golden. All right, thank you and welcome. At this point, I'll call the meeting to order. And now for the approval of the agenda. Do we have any additions or modifications?
Yes, sir. We do have one reduction on the consent agenda. Item D, we are still waiting on some wording on that, so we will hold that until the next meeting.
Okay. We will delete approval of Stepping Stones contract and postpone that till the next agenda. With that being said, do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
No second.
Thank you, Ms. Knight. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Good news.
At this point, I'd like to call Dr. Jones to the podium.
All right, good evening. Welcome to West Stokes. Those of you who do not know me, I'm Sam Jones. I'm the principal at West Stokes High School. It's been documented and was discussed and shared as rightfully so, but we need to recognize a couple of students here tonight. And so at this time, the Stokes County Board of Education would like to recognize two outstanding scholars from the class of 2025, valedictorian Matthew Alexander Grubb and salutatorian Tessa Malini Hatchett. These exceptional students distinguish themselves through the years of academic excellence, leadership, and commitment to our community. At the conclusion of the fourth quarter, Grubb received a final GPA of 4.5323, earning him the highest academic honor of valedictorian. Hatchett followed closely with a 4.503 GPA in securing the title of salutatorian. Matthew is the son of Dwight Hall and Angela Bonds. He is recognized for striking a balance between academic rigor and athletic dedication. A member of the National Honor Society, Grubb also played for the West Stokes football and baseball teams, demonstrating leadership in both the classroom and on the field. This fall, he will attend the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill, where he plans to pursue a degree in business. Grubb was awarded the $12,000 institutional scholarship from the University of Chapel Hill in recognition for his accomplishments. Tessa, the daughter of Eric and Jessica Hatchett, is also a member of the National Honor Society and a standout athlete on the West Stokes soccer team. She will also be joining Grubb at UNC Chapel Hill to pursue a degree in dental hygiene. Hatchett earned an $8,000 scholarship to UNC Chapel Hill Institutional Scholarship as a testament of her hard work and academic success as well. At this time, I would invite both students up to the podium. And so at this time, we're going to get a little bit informal, but I want to separate, take plenty of time to take pictures, and then if the board wants to take pictures as well, families who need to take pictures, we'll take our time. We're going to be matching first, and Grubb will be something, or Tessa, and then something getting as well. So if they're turning around, let's make sure they're there. Right? Okay. We'd also like to recognize Miss Tessa Hatchett at this time. Obviously, we're here under unfortunate circumstances, but I hope you know that we love them and that we'll continue to support them. If you have time, come down, take pictures with the board, everybody in the backdrop. We can do that at this time of allegiance. And so whatever you would like, let's make it happen to the best we can to make it as right.
Well, in addition to that, as I stated, you were denied, unfortunately, your ability to speak at your graduation. The floor is yours, either one of y'all. I promise. I understand.
I'm good.
I'm glad you're here.
We do have one more good news item tonight, and we'll ask Dr. TH to come to the stand for the second item.
I'm thrilled to share some exciting news that shines a bright light on the hard work, forward thinking, and innovation happening across our district. We have been named a 2025 ISTI and ASCD Distinguished District, an international recognition that honors school districts leading meaningful, system-wide change to improve teaching and learning for all students. This prestigious award celebrates districts that act as lighthouses for others, embracing innovation, engaging their communities, and putting students at the center of transformative practices. We are proud to be among the few recognized three districts across the world this year as driving commitment to change in bold and impactful ways. Our nomination focused on our thoughtful work we've done around generative AI, specifically the development of our district-wide generative AI policy and the comprehensive guidance documents tailored for staff, students, and families. We aim not to just adopt new tools, but to do so with intention, clarity, and transparency. This award belongs to every teacher, leader, student, and family member, and our community partners who have embraced this journey. It reflects a shared vision of preparing learners in a rapidly evolving world and doing so with purpose and heart. Thank you for your continued support and believing in innovation that serves all of our students.
And that concludes the good news items for tonight. Okay, next on the agenda is public comments. Pam, do we have anybody signed up? Okay, then we'll forego.
Just a moment. I think Ms. McGee had a suggestion here. I think that Dr. TH needs to be recognized for all of her hard work. Yes, then come on down, Dr. TH. Right? to be recognized for all of her hard work. Yes, then come on down, Dr. TH, right?
Yeah, but she could be taking selfies during.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. It's the approval of the regular session minutes, June 16th of 2025, approval of go guarding contract, approval of gaggle contract, and approval of communication services for the deaf and hard of hearing contract. Do you have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Robertson. Seconded by?
Second.
Mr. Duncan. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Superintendent's report. Dr. Rice, tell us about critical incident response training.
Board, we're very pleased that in three days last month, June 17th, 18th, and 19th, the Stokes County Sheriff's Department organized a critical incident response training that was held at our schools. There were 170 professional participants over the course of the three days and 25 volunteers. They went through active participation of active shooters, communications, evacuations, and triage. This was a multi-agency event that had law enforcement from Hanging Rock State Park, the King Police Department, North Carolina State Highway Patrol, probation and parole, the Stokes County Sheriff's Office, and wildlife. Other departments were Stokes County 911 Communication, Stokes County EMS, and Stokes County Emergency Management. There were fire departments there from Francisco Volunteer Fire Department, Lawsonville Volunteer Fire Department, Northeast Stokes Volunteer Fire Department, Rural Hall Fire Department, South Stokes Volunteer Fire Department, and the Walnut Cove Volunteer Fire Department. Also participating was Stokes County Fire Marshal's Office. Stokes County Schools was allowed to be there as we hosted the event, and our administrators got to participate, as well as the Stokes County Medical Director, Dr. Nelson, and two assistant medical directors. Those that were involved, I'd like to thank all those agencies for participating, as not only has it let them have training to prepare in the unfortunate event, we have a critical incident where they do have to respond, but it also gave us an idea to go from our plans and tabletop activities to seeing things in real life. And since then, we've already had several follow-up meetings with law enforcement of things that we can do better, things that we learned during that time, and we will probably bring up some policy changes in the future as well as a result of some of these meetings, as we try to make sure that our students and staff and communities that are in our building have the safest place possible for their students to learn. So we're very grateful events like that do not happen without a lot of planning, and we're grateful that they took on that role. The Stokes County Sheriff's Department did that. It was all very well professionally done, and again, we learned a lot from it, as well as the other agencies as well.
Okay, great. Any questions from the board? Ms. Bennett? Ms. Knight?
No, sir.
Mr. Robertson?
No questions.
Mr. Duncan?
No, sir.
All right, thank you. All right, moving on to discussion agenda discussion. Learning.com Grant Award. Dr. TH. She's going to get her steps in tonight.
Good evening again, Board. I'm happy to announce that we have been selected for a Learning.com grant again this year. It is a fully funded grant for our K-8 students. The platform serves our students in learning about cybersecurity, digital citizenship, typing. So across the district, our K-8 students are able to engage in those critical skills. Any questions?
Ms. Bennett, any questions?
No questions.
Ms. Knight?
I'll look forward to seeing the data tools to monitor progress and see how that goes.
Yeah, absolutely. We had, King Elementary last year was one of our highest-using platforms across the district, so we have shared that data with our principals so that they can use that data to inform their school improvement plans this year as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Robertson?
No questions. Just congratulations. Great job. Thank you for what you're doing.
Yeah, I appreciate your hard work and dedication to this, so thank you for that.
Close in a row. Great job.
Thank you.
Okay, discussion of the 2025-2026 budget, capital and current.
You had this information, I think, in a packet that Pam gave you tonight. First of all, we will need approval from the board to allow the school system to continue to operate and provide essential services until a final budget can be approved. So that is one item we need to take care of tonight. From the handout, if you will look, we want to just review with you on the current expense budget at this time, just to review because we've not heard from the state budget. So Dr. Rice's recommendation would be that at this time, we hold on current expense till we get some additional information. But to let you know where we stand, request to the commissioners with $17,574,171. We have received the final approval from the commissioners, and when they give us a final approval, now they include the fines and forfeitures of $16,327,445. Then, if you remember when we done our budget, we have some local, like interest, Medicaid, and that remained the same at this time, $135,000. So as an end results, we are looking at cutting $1,111,726. Below that, I just kind of pulled out the county funding only to see that, again, the county appropriation part, how much is fines, and how much they allotted for the popular springs, which comes through their four cent funding, to see that the $1,11726 is the actual cut. Do you have any questions at this time? Additional information will be coming as soon as we get some additional information on the state budgets approved. Dr. Rice, is there anything you want to add?
No, ma'am. Again, we're just asking for the essential continuation at this point until we receive other budgets and we can make further decisions at that time.
And this is kind of what we do every year, to allow us just to pay our employees and pay the bills that we actually have.
So do we need to approve tonight, like a continuation of last year's budget?
Really, basically, what you're doing is to let us operate at the same level from the previous year.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
So do we need to move that to action?
That part will need to go to action. The board's willing to do so. We'll have a payroll coming up soon.
Before we get to that, are there any other questions?
So the difference, we're going to be, have to be pulling from our fund balance?
Either you'll be pulling it from your fund balance or making some cuts, additional deletions. Yes, sir.
And that's the, this number is all kind of contingent on state allotment, which we've not received.
This number is the actual number that you have from the local dollars at this time. We're just wanting to see what impact the state budget might have in case we do have to do some changes to some of your requests. Yes, sir.
Ms. Moore, I do have another question. We've heard, you know, that the federal, there's some federal grants that are on hold, I guess, at this point, right?
Yes.
And do we have an idea how much that is to local funding for us?
I don't have that with me, but over $200,000 is what I'm thinking. It's, one of them's stated Title I, but it's not our main Title I. It's Title I(c). One of them is for our Limited English, and the main one that would affect our individual schools is what we call Support PRC 108, which is where we let allotments to the schools for art, music, guidance, technology. That was the one we're most concerned about at this time, but it would be over $200,000 overall.
If they do hold those grants, and we don't receive that funding, and we're going to have to deal with that in some way, shape, form, or fashion.
Yes.
Is that, are those, could we, could we fund those programs through our fund balance? Are we allowed to do that since some of those are federal funds? And then, how does that work?
That would be a board decision. If, for example, those funds are no longer available, then if you all decide that you want to include or change your local budget, once we approve it, to include some of those expenditures, yes, you could do that. It would be local dollars then. The other one that I didn't mention is improvement quality for teachers. That's another allotment that would affect us, and we do pay some teachers from that and also for our beginning teachers and staff development. So there's the federal grants that we're looking at on hold right now, that we see no allotment on at this time.
Okay, so our fund balance could come into play. We could.
As the board, the board could decide to do that. Yes, sir.
And, you know, in my mind, that's what the fund balance, that's why we try to keep a fund balance, right, for unexpected expenditures, for things that we don't foresee happening, just like we do at our own homes. We try to have a savings account for things, if, you know, if we need a new set of tires on the car, we're not expecting it. We have a little bit of money left over, we can, you know, we can buy tires or whatever we got to do. And, you know, there's been some debate about, you know, do we really need a fund balance? Do we need as much as we had? We should spend it down. You know, if we needed more money, we could go ask the commissioners for more money. But this, you know, federal grants on hold is something that nobody saw coming.
Right.
Right? It's not, it's not something that we expected. And in my mind, it thinks, I think it's a perfect reason why we should have a fund balance, and we should have a nice fund balance. We should have something that, you know, in case something like this comes up. If we can't fund some of these programs, will it cause job cuts?
That's, could be. I can go back to the decision of the board.
If we don't fund them in some way, there'll be tough decisions that we'll have to make.
That one allotment that pays some teaching positions would be one that you possibly would, could have some cuts if you decided to do that. The rest of them would be more instructional, staff development, and supplies and materials, those kind of things.
Okay. And we can deal with that, I guess.
And that's another reason we're wanting to hold up on current expense. Hopefully, we'll hear more about the federal and also from the state. Yes, sir.
Okay. So we can, we can still deal with that going forward, but it's not something we really have to deal with tonight either. So I just wanted to get a better understanding. I know with those funds, federal funds, state funds, local funds, sometimes you can't mix them. You can't do this. And I didn't really have a good understanding, is if we could pick up that slack from those federal grants if they're on hold, if we could fund it from our fund balance, and that at least gives us some information, and something to think about going forward. So.
It would just be when we do the final budget approval, you all would decide if you wanted to add items or change other items to offset those federal grants if we do not receive that funding. So you would have that opportunity to do that.
Right. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Moore.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Duncan, any questions?
I've just got one on the second page budget update, capital outlay budget review. On the recommendation, it's decrease the transportation bus radios, the helmets, and the London vest bill. Are we, you suggesting we don't do those at this point?
The London vest bill would be the only one that's not done. The others, we have done using some carryover funding. So those items are done, but it wouldn't come out of this budget.
They were completed and paid for this past year. And now that you brought up capital outlay, we're looking for $387,500 cut. And you can see the recommendation that's coming from Dr. Rice there. And like he said, the bus radios are in place, the helmets are in place or getting to that point. So, and we're just decreasing the difference in emergencies, the $7,500.
Yeah, I understand. I mean, this was just, Dr. Rice, this was just a little misleading that they were still on the list, even though they're already done, tugging up to that.
When we had talked about that in the spring after we did the recommendation to go ahead and pay it out of extra funds, this would come out of the budget that we had done. So that would be a reduction without necessarily a cut for those two items.
And attach the capital outlay budget behind that for the board. You can review that. You might have other items that you would recommend over the recommendation from the office. So that's just there for your convenience. And if the board chooses to do so by approving capital outlay, since that doesn't come into effect from federal and state funds, it would give Richie them the authority to hopefully start some of the projects. But again, that would be a board decision.
So at this time from us, you want, you would like the motion, I think, Mr. Robertson was about to make about a continuing resolution for expenditures.
We do need that. Yes, sir.
Since you started it, I'll let you make it.
I think I may have forgotten now what the motion was, but I think we want to make a motion, we move to action to continue this year's budget as of last year's, on last year's budget numbers, to continue until we formally pass a budget. Is that close enough, Ms. Moore?
That's fine.
Get the gist of it.
Okay, do I have a second?
Is that just for the current expense and not the capital outlay, or both? Because I don't know if there's been any discussion other than, I mean, London was put on here as a recommendation, but the board has not, I don't think, decided on that one. You get what I'm saying?
Mr. Robertson made a motion for the continuation budget. For the capital budget, that could be a separate conversation. It could be approved tonight, or if y'all want more conversation with that, it could go to the next meeting. And so that would be the board's pleasure as to what, when you talk about those items, what you would like to do.
By approving the action, motion that he made, we could continue on with our carryover projects in capital, but not, in my opinion, start the new ones.
New items.
Yes, yes.
And I think that would be, I think it should be satisfactory, I think, with the board to just, to kind of get us through until we can formally pass a budget, which would hopefully be maybe next meeting or whatever the board chooses.
Okay, we have a motion on the table. Do I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Bennett. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried.
Is there further discussion now on capital?
Well, that's what, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, I mean, if you would like to discuss it further now, if you would like to just look at the list and think about it to the next meeting. But Ms. Moore has shared the recommendations that we have to get back to the line item of the budget number that the county commissioners gave us. Those are my suggestions to do that, but if the board would like to discuss that now or think about it and discuss it more the next work session, that is up to the board.
Let me ask one quick question. You don't even need to come up. Do you have enough on your plate to keep you busy for the next two weeks until we have a chance to discuss it? With that being said, Board, we can table it until the next meeting and then give Richie some more fun things to play with, or we can discuss it now.
I'm okay table it till the next meeting. We just got the information tonight, and I would prefer to be able to digest it and come back at the next meeting.
Okay. Discussion of facility disposition.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Rice asked that I go through the process if the board decides that any piece of property is no longer needed for public school purposes, the process for disposition of that, of that property, former school or other facility. It's a three-step process. The first process is the board would adopt in open session a motion that a particular piece of property is no longer needed by the Board of Education for public school purposes. The second step is the county commissioners have first right of refusal to acquire that property. What we've done in the past is contact the county commissioners, inform them that the board has determined that a particular piece of property is no longer needed for public school purposes, give them the opportunity to exercise their right of first refusal. If the commissioners decide they do want the property, then it becomes a matter of negotiation between the two boards as to what can as to what consideration the county is to pay to the Board of Education for the property. If the county commissioners decide they do not want the property, then the board can dispose of it. It has to be done publicly. Either by a public auction or we could seek bids through a negotiation process, but then would have to advertise the last and highest bid for anyone to file an increased or upset bid. So those are the three steps involved in the process. So if the, the board decides tonight that one of the former schools is no longer needed for public school purposes, we could adopt a motion declaring that and then we would notify the county commissioners that they could then let us know whether or not they wanted to exercise their right of refusal to acquire that property.
And the reason we've asked Mr. Johnson to go over this, we have worked to clean out Pine Hall and go through all the proper processes with instructional materials, the furniture, all of that stuff. We are not quite done yet, but we should be done in the next two to four weeks in that ballpark. Again, some things might pop up, but we are looking at having that building empty in the next several weeks. And at that point, we would like to cut some of the expenses, the power bill, the insurance, those type things. So we wanted to make sure that the board understood the process and you understood kind of the timeline that we're looking at, that we are just about finished emptying that building.
So with that being said, Fred, do we need a, can we entertain, can I, as the chair, entertain a motion for the disposition of the property pending final closure?
Certainly. If the board is determined now that it's not going to use that property for public school purposes after all the furniture and other items have been removed, then that would be the first step. We could do that tonight if we wanted to or at a, at the next meeting.
So with that being said, board, I'll entertain a motion to dispose of, disposition of the Pine Hall property or we can table it until the next meeting.
I would make a motion to table it to the next meeting.
Do I have a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So table. All right, moving on to the action. Approval of personnel and coaching.
Motion to approve personnel and coaching.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Duncan, Mr. Robertson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Approval of budget amendments. Ms. Moore.
We're going back now to the 2425 school year. You have state amendment number three, increasing it by $10,545. This is where we received some additional funding from DPI for special needs and literacy intervention and also it's allowances for co-transfers for year-end transfers. Are you okay if I just continue through each one?
Please do.
Okay. Current expense amendment number four, increasing the budget by $20,971.87. It's increasing our fines, some rental and interest, and some miscellaneous revenue that we've received. Federal budget amendment number seven increases the budget by $53,844. This, again, additional allotment from DPI for our special needs program. Capital outlay, budget amendment number four. The main reason for this decrease of $2,828,473.74 is because of the needs base and the roofing that we received. This reflects our actual expenditures and if you'll know, we've completed some of those projects. All those funds would not be used, so this is actually the main reason for this decrease. Also, the athletic grant, we're not complete with the track, so we have budgeted a decrease there and that'll carry over into the next budget year. And also, we've adjusted some on the endowment, additional funding that we've received from Morcovia. We've received some additional funding for fixed assets. Child nutrition, number one amendment, it's a decrease of $488.629. The main reason for this is the USDA grants came in less than was projected in the original budget and then also allows for some co-transfers. You can see the detail of the different kind of revenue there. Current expense fund eight, increasing it by $234.556.19. The main reason for this increase is additional funding that we've received from Medicaid and some contributions and donations. And also allow some co-transfers. Current expense amendment number five, we received last minute some use of facilities rental of $3,080. So that's to add, that is additional revenue. Current expense fund eight amendment four, $23,202. Again, additional Medicaid received exactly at the end of the school year, increasing that budget for that. Any questions?
Ms. Bennett, any questions? Ms. Knight?
No, sir.
Mr. Robertson?
No questions.
Mr. Duncan?
No, sir.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve budget amendments as presented by Ms. Moore.
All right, do I have a second? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Approval of custodians, custodial supply bid.
Good evening, board. In your packet, you should find a copy of the custodial supply proposals tabulation. This tabulation shows the total scores of each vendor with 100 points being a perfect score. Criteria used to determine the scores is listed on that page as well, and they were competitive pricing, quality and range of products offered, delivery capabilities, references, environmental consideration, service and support. Just some notes here. For the vendor Unipack, I gave them benefit of the doubt in the service and support area since I didn't have any references to confirm or deny that. Two of the vendors did not provide all information requested in our RFP and their scores reflect that. In the RFP, I provided a list of our district's most used items and asked for individual pricing on each item. Three vendors provided this complete list and I used this to compare the pricing. On the information I provided, you can see that I pulled items, it's 20 to be exact, at random from the bid sheets to compare these product prices. Then I used the entire bidding list totals to compare prices to decide how many points to award each vendor. On both product price comparisons, Morsete Paper was the lowest cost vendor. On, uh, delivery capability scores were based on distance from the district and the shipping methods. Two vendors, Central Poly and Unipack shipped items from New Jersey via UPS, FedEx or Mail. Morsete ships from Greensboro directly, Tar Heel ships from Winston-Salem directly, and Staples from Charlotte, a warehouse. Those three all use their own vehicles to deliver. Central Poly and Unipack score low on the quality and range of products section since they did not offer all products needed. References were good for all companies except Unipack who did not provide a reference list. Based on that information and the scores that you see, I recommend that we award the contract to Morsete Packaging and they are the vendor that we have had previously. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Ms. Bennett?
No questions.
Knight? Robertson?
No questions.
Duncan? We're good. Do I have approval to, for the Morsete Packaging bid?
Motion to approve the Morsete packaging for custodial supplies.
Thank you, Ms. Knight. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Thank you, Mr. Robertson. K-12 screener and personalized, personalized platform.
Good evening, board. Bringing to you tonight, after doing all of our due diligence in March, I asked if we could pursue a platform and personalized learning pathway. This was what we've had IREDDI for, for several years. We went through the purpose of it, of the screener and the personalized platform and how we would utilize it. In March, we put out the request for proposal. In April, we had all the vendors come and present to our committee, which was comprised of classroom teachers, principals, coaches, directors, and for those who met the criteria for our RFP. The schools had four weeks to take back the information and review the demo accounts and share with their colleagues. And then we did a survey of teachers. Once that was complete, we also had a meetings with all principals at each grade span to, to get continued feedback in June. And after reviewing and evaluating cost proposals for each vendor's products and gathering feedback from staff and principals, the district recommends that we adopt IXL, K-12. The product considerations were, it's for under math, it was K-12, reading 612. Science, in science tested grades, alignment to the standard courses study, instructional supports what was, what would be available, the technology compatibility, ease and ease and use of teachers, students, and families, and professional development. We also looked at cost. The total cost for the adoption would be $96,356.25. This is a year-to-year adoption. It is not multiple years. The professional development would be around $15,000 of that $96,000. On the backside, the, the professional development would include webinars and in-person teachers and administrators. The implementation will begin during, there is an error there. It's not the 2425 school year. I did not go back in time. It is the 2526 school year. This is a pretty significant reduction from the cost that we were paying with the previous vendor that we used. That's, if, if anyone has any questions, I can further elaborate on. You have the information there along with the contract for the services and cost.
Ms. Bennett, do you have any questions?
No questions at this time.
Ms. Knight?
Do you feel like the prior vendor, IREDDI, offered more of a comprehensive instructional as follow-up once they were identified or, I mean, I know it was a lot of daily.
Yeah. It, the, I guess there's, there were lots of excellent tools and resources within IREDDI. I think some of the frustration, and this is totally an anecdotal answer, is it, when you have so many resources, it become, can become the analysis, you know, the paralysis of analysis. You're trying to constantly figure out what the better resource is. It was very extensive and sometimes that can be labor, laborious for teachers when they have very few minutes and precious time. So I do think that IXL is going to give us some of the same resources at a much easier access for teachers with their precious and limited time.
So do you feel like it will be left a little more open-ended as far as, you know, how to then adapt to the students that are identified?
So it will adapt. It will assign students a pathway, so to speak. And they call them lessons and lessons that they'll need to do and it gives immediate feedback. So say I'm completing a math assignment or task or problem. It will, if I get it wrong, it will immediately go back and reteach it to me and then, then give me the opportunity to work and answer that question again. Versus what they were, it was just marked them incorrect and then the students didn't know what they missed, so they weren't sure where to go for the next steps.
It just presented it again the next day maybe and kept covering it until the score improved, I guess.
Right. Or if the student continued to miss it, it would immediately close out that and put them on a different lesson or a different pathway instead of going back and reteaching. Again, this is just a supplemental piece. This is by no means instruct, the main point of instruction. It does, the teachers, it will give a little more flexibility as far as how they want to use it. As far as the amount of minutes, their recommendation is 20 minutes a day versus the 45 minutes in each content. So there's, there's some give and take in both ways. But we want the focus for our students and our teachers to be that their instruction is the most important thing in their classroom. This is just an additional piece to support you as you continue.
So at this time, would there be a policy or something along with it that mandates, you know, 30 minutes a day or something kind of like that seen in the past?
Not at this time.
Or, you know, would be at the teacher's discretion?
Yes. We would like for teachers to, if I have a student who is well on grade level, well above grade level, and they don't need 20 minutes of time a day on a product, that's not where, their time may be better spent doing something that's more enrich, enrichment for them.
And then another new piece to this, I believe, right, is the ninth through 12th grades. That's different from before, so.
Yes, ma'am.
Hoping that that would help identify or fill some gaps.
Continue to help us catch kids and, I shouldn't say catch kids, but to intervene in the proper ways for even as we continue through our ninth through 12th grade. Includes, and this does include science. As were before, we didn't have anything that supported science. And as we continue to go forward, they continue to enrich, enrich their resources and we're hoping to have some ACT support as well with it. We had some good conversations with principals at each grade span on the best usage and the best product that would not become saturated for our students or our teachers. We want something that is, is not a burden, but also gives them the data and information that they need so that they can provide the enrichment and structure and interventions that our students need.
And so overall, good feedback during the review process?
Very, very good feedback. There were some close competitions, obviously. There's lots of things out there, but we did receive lots of good feedback. So, and, and lots of good information, not only from the vendors. We were very appreciative of all the vendors. They were very supportive. They answered all questions that we had and were very approachable, not only by us at the district level, but teachers when they had questions, principals. So we were very appreciative of the process. It's not an easy decision when you're making a decision, so I wanted as much input from everyone as we could have.
Have you been able to gather input from surrounding districts or colleagues in other areas?
So in other, we are all over the place, as I, you know, I've said this before. As many people, as many, as many vendors has applied for this, there's a dozen more that can do the same thing. And so it's, it's like that across the districts. There are school systems that are using IREDDI. There are school systems that are using IXL and several of the others that presented to us. We, it's just the, what meets our needs at this time. And like I said, we, we're going year to year like we did IREDDI so that we are not, if we have to make a decision that we need to do different, something differently, we can always bring that to you again and ask for permission to pursue the RFP again.
Okay.
I don't, I think it's better that we don't get locked into something.
Yes, okay.
Even though it may cost us a little bit more each year in the long run, it also gives us flexibility if we feel like it's not meeting our needs.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much.
Mr. Robertson?
Your questions?
Mr. Duncan?
How long do we have IREDDI?
Five years.
Five years?
Mm-hmm. And when I went through the data to do some comparison to see, what I found was that, that IREDDI certainly did not hurt us by any means, but it also didn't make the gains that I would have, and our students and staff would have loved to have seen. We wanted to filling, to help us fill in gaps. It's not an intervention. We cannot use it, I mean, as the intervention. We can use it as support for intervention and we want to help our kids and we want to meet them where they are.
So what do you think was the biggest differentiating piece that made y'all decide on this platform versus the other vendors that?
There were a couple of things. I'm not, I mean, cost is definitely one of them. The, the ability to progress monitor within, that is something that the other vendors were not able to give us. There are ways to gather that data. You, the teachers have to go in and physically calculate that piece. There is a way to get it, but being able to determine whether or not what I'm doing as interventions is working or I need to do something different is, is a helpful tool. So that's kind of the biggest pieces that made the decision.
And again, this doesn't take place of any.
Absolutely not. There is nothing that we can replace a classroom teacher. It just gives us additional data that we need to make good instructional decisions. that we need to make good instructional decisions. It is part of the, I always say, trying to meet the needs of our students is like a puzzle, and this is just one piece. Nothing can, the biggest piece of that puzzle is our classroom teachers.
Yes, yes, absolutely. And the, and the price comparison, I mean, we...
We're, I mean, I can't, I can give you kind of an estimate, we're looking about $150,000 less.
Than Already?
Mm-hmm, yes, sir.
Okay.
That's an estimate.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, that's all. My, my question is, how long will it take for staff development until we're fully up to speed?
So one of the things I have requested is to do multiple sessions where we focus on chunks of it at a time. Through different things of implementation over the years, I have learned that sitting all day and in training is very difficult to retain everything someone gives you at that time. So we are going to do these over multiple sessions. We're looking at one-hour webinars, so, but they're synchronous, not asynchronous, so that teachers are, but they can also do it conveniently from where they are, instead of having to come to one central place for the training. That also helps us save money for training. So one of the things we would be doing is like a getting started webinar. This is how you get started, this is how you get in, these are how your students get in, this is where you begin, and let them, get them going. Then the next, how do you review your data? How do you utilize it for the next step? Then how does, then a session on how do your students interact with it? So that it, it takes us ti, it may take us a little bit longer to get fully implemented with the PD, at the same time, it's more manageable in bite-sized chunks that teachers can sustain a little bit better.
So it's not going to be a quick...
No, no.
Because, I mean, my concern is, and I'm not sure what happened here, we started looking in March, in May, we surveyed everybody, and then in, at the end of June, a month later, we asked everybody again, and here it is at the end of July, and we're just now...
Yes, sir.
There's about a 60-day...
Yes, sir. Yes, so we have discussed, we will not do this as immediately as we walk in the door. I realize that we, we're a little bit, like you said, we're, we're coming back to school in August, so we're looking at probably doing an October first, first round for benchmark, and then going from there. I don't want to throw all of this on our teachers as soon as they walk in the door, that never works anyway. We want to, to pace it out and do it in a, a way that is meaningful and useful for our students and our teachers, and not something that is an added extra burden to anybody.
I mean, I've just got concerned, I mean, we're saving $150,000, we're getting something better, and it took us two months to figure out that that's what we wanted.
Yes, so I wanted to make sure that I was doing my due diligence, going back over all the vendors' proposals, also wanted to speak with principals, pull them in, also spoke with Dr. Rice and Dr. Jones, really trying to make the right decision for what's best for Stokes County schools, with also knowing that we have, we do have budget issues and knowing that our time constraints, and so just trying to do what the best thing. And I know it seems like it's a long time, but the last, we, we surveyed the teachers the last week of school, then, then I talked to the principals shortly thereafter.
How did the surveys come out, were they...
The surveys were very close in some areas, for, for, we try, we disaggregated it, not only by all teachers responding, we segregated it by elementary, middle, and high, and then we looked at what was, what features were offered, what the cost was, what the, what the teachers were looking for in the information they gave back. We also looked at what the committee had said and how they rated each product, and then we looked at each, in grade span, we, when we got to middle school and high school, we looked at it by content as well, what would meet the needs for each content. Then as we moved all that, those pieces together, we felt like that IXL met the best for all of those pieces.
Okay. I mean, just the, the feedback I got, everybody loved it.
Mm-hmm.
And they were ready for it, and there's like, have you voted on it yet? And I'm like, how, what is IXL?
Mm-hmm.
So...
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I do have one other, just, so another rollout and the time it takes to get people up to speed, would it not make sense to do a two-year, I mean, I'm not saying the lot, I don't, I don't know how, as far as a contract piece, but you hate to get into it, you know, it's going to take some time if you're rolling out in October and...
So I can go back and ask for a, a two-year contract and see what that difference would be, and I can gather that information for the board if you would like.
I mean, does that make sense? I mean, you, you've got a year to, you hate to say, well, you're pulling out the teachers and they may, they're going to say, well, in a year's time, we may or may not have it.
And I definitely don't like that message either, because I don't want teachers feeling like, okay, we get this, we get used to it, and then we pull back. The reason why we pulled back and I asked for coming together to put out this RFP was because of all of the complaints that I was hearing from Already and was getting back to me with that, but also on the surveys I do with the elementary every school year, but also because the data was not showing that it was not hurting us, but it was also not giving us the steps forward that we needed. Okay, so, and, did, did you guys hear what Ms. Moore said?
Oh, always.
Okay. So, and I have talked with Ms. Moore to see if this is within our budget per view.
Well, what I will say then, and I'll make this suggestion, even though it's on action, we're meeting in two weeks.
Yes, sir.
You're not going to do anything till October to start with?
Well, we'll start doing some training before October.
Are you going to start doing it before we start school?
No, we will not do it before that.
Okay, then we've got to October, August 1st.
Yes, sir.
So why don't we do this, you find out what a two-year...
Yes, sir.
...contract would be, and then you get with Ms. Moore to find out if that's even a feasible...
A possibility, okay.
Possibility, especially if we're, if we're going to save money, and if we're not starting till October, roll, implement it, we're already set 25% into the school year.
Yeah. So we'll, but we will start training earlier than October, we just want to make sure that that, that we understand that.
I was just going by what you said, that we were going to start rolling it. Okay, so with that being said, the board can still vote, it's on action, a motion to approve it or not? Do I have a motion? With failure to a motion?
Yes, sir.
We'll see October 4th, or 4th.
Yes, yes, sir. Thank you.
August 4th, rather.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
All right. All right, next on the agenda is the approval of the continuing budget resolution as presented by Mr. Robertson. Does that meet all the boxes, Fred?
Yes.
Okay. You want to make that motion again?
The budget amendments?
Yeah.
Yeah, motion to approve the budget amendments as presented by Ms. Moore.
Not, not the budget amendments, the continuation.
The continuing resolution for the budget for the current expense.
Oh, yeah. The motion to approve the continuing resolution for the budget that's carried over from last year.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Information and announcements, Dr. Jones.
Board, we are rapidly approaching the start of school, and at the beginning of August is quite busy. I want to go over just a few things that we have taken place. One is our board meeting on August the 4th, that's a work session that'll take place at 6 o'clock in our administrative office. Early College, their staff starts back, I believe, the, a week from, or next Friday, I believe it is, and then two weeks from tomorrow is our first work day for traditional schools for, for their staffs. So want to welcome everyone back to school as they begin to prepare for a new year. Also want to remind all of you that convocation will take place the 8th of August at 8:00 a.m. here at West Stokes. You also have a few other documents in your board packet, including fundraiser requests, also discretionary days, start and end times for each school, and calendars for the upcoming school year. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Rice, I know we have a new director, do we have to say goodbye to the old, to our, another one?
We do.
See, y'all didn't, y'all didn't think we were paying attention.
Tonight would be the last board meeting for Dr. Lisa LaMonica, who has served us very well in Stokes County schools in a variety of capacities, classroom teacher, assistant principal, principal, director, have I missed any? Comic relief, uplifting spirit, she checks a lot of boxes. But we are grateful for the time that she spent with Stokes County Schools, its administrators. We recognized her and spent a little time with her last week, but we do want to thank her for her service as, as she goes off to her next chapter. I'm sure she will be successful in that and bring joy to those around her. And you did mention Mr. Atkins, you did vote on him at a previous meeting, and we're glad that, that he is here with us tonight as our Director of Secondary Education and CTE, and we'll get back to more of a normal seating arrangement at the next meeting, and we'll be hearing from him in the near future, I'm sure.
Again, also, on behalf of the board, I think I can speak, thank you, Dr. Jones, for helping clear it up. Okay? With that being said, we will, I'll take a motion to recess back into closed.
A motion to recess back into closed session?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're back in closed briefly, or somewhere.